There you.
There you was closed down.
Last minute stuff.
Right there, that lone stoplight that's out there soft by the gas.
We ready?
I've got it recording, so yeah.
Okay.
Want to talk?
Call order, the Culver Town Council meeting for Tuesday, May 25th, 2021. Roll call, please.
William Clevinger.
Rose.
Bill Giffins.
Eric.
Sally Richardi.
Here.
Bill Ham.
Here.
Bridgewest.
Present.
So I'll stand for the pledge.
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have approval of the May minutes on the 11th. Motion made by Rich, taken by Sally, approved the May 11th. All of them, favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next on the agenda is open the ambulance bid.
We'll have a man's report.
No. Please don't be asleep on that one. We got it, we got it. Culver, Culver Union Township Emergency Medical Service Ambulance proposal for Ford E450, Osage ambulance body, May of 2021. Rest of the town council Culver, Culver Union Township EMS, 200 East Washington Street, Culver, Indiana, 46511. Town council, thank you for allowing more central emergency vehicles and Osage ambulances the opportunity to bid on your next ambulance purchase. We are very interested in learning your business and trust. As your local sales representative, I pride myself in taking care of customers to build lasting relationships. Osage ambulance built in Lynn, Missouri since 1983, has been in the same location, kept the same company mission, worked with the same core group of managers since entering the ambulance industry. Also important to Osage is the longevity of our employees, majority of our manufacturing team has more than 16 years committed to building Osage ambulances. The ambulance bid. It is for a new Ford 450 Warrior ambulance per public specifications with two inspection trips. 2022 Ford E450 chassis with type three Osage conversion, price of $288,132.58. That's a Ford rebate and a trade-in. On the 2009, the Ford rebate is $5,324. The, uh, that's the rebate, the trade-in is $6,000 for a total delivered price of $269,108.58. Requested performance bond if required, please add $3,130, prepaid discount, 50% payment. Within 60 days of signed contract, we get a $1,000 deduction. Thank you. When submitted, David B. Cole, Indiana Sales Rep. We take this, uh, I think we take this under advisement and give it to Jeff and let him review with all the specs and get back. If you want to review it tonight, you know, get back by the end of the meeting or if you want to.
No, I'll.
Take it in two weeks and come back.
I'll go back to your next meeting.
I have a question. I only have one bid.
You got it.
Three proposals were sent out or requested and only one came back. I'm seeing that part of the reason is the recent ship shortage that's going on right now and it's affecting delays in deliveries. So that may be one reason that it's, the ambulance industry is a very small industry for Ford and the other manufacturers. And so delays over like two to three months right now, provided being told by a couple of different vendors. So they have unknown timeframes that they want to go with. And so I think some are passing on bidding now.
Do we have an absolute date in 2022 that we have to have those ambulance?
They are also under contract. Once they, once it's signed, they have a period of 300 days.
Then my question was though, since we only have one bidder and there's extending circumstances for the other. My direct question is, is there a set date in 2022 that we absolutely have to have the same ones?
It would be listed in the specs.
What?
It would be listed in our perspective.
From your, from your perspective, is there an exact date? I think that's his question.
My question is what day do you?
It would be probably right now, probably in March of 2021 or 22. I have no exact, I have no exact date until the contract is signed, approved and all that.
Do you have a predetermined date in your mind when that?
Need it.
When you need a new ambulance?
The other one's worn out.
Oh, well, yeah, the other one's worn out. Yeah, it's, it's, I thought it's last leg. We just spent close to 8,000 just to repair it just two months ago. So the goal was initially to bet it out this year and take it first quarter of next year. So the best bet is to get it as soon as possible.
So you're on an ASAP basis. Can I answer your question, Bill?
Good questions to answer this, not, not, not what you like.
We only need, you know, that we only have one bid. And essentially in certain sense, I understand that. But, you know, things can change in a month or two months or so forth. Would we get two bids? Who knows?
We can put it back out to bid if that's the council's plan here.
We already, we already just have one bid. We've already read, we've already read this one. That's, you know, so we need to act on this.
And it could be you only had one because we're looking for a specific type of ambulance as well. So you may not necessarily have three people bid on the same type, you know?
Does this price surprise you one way or the other?
It does not surprise me in the price frame in there. It's a specialized vehicle, so it's a limited, it's a limited group of people that are going to do it. So, um, the, the bidders are out there. We could bid it again. It's just going to delay us. It puts the risk out there. Um, we do have a, unfortunately, the other bidders would know what this price is.
Right.
So there.
Well, you'd have to rebid the whole thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How does this compare to last bid that we got on this certain ambulance? Do you know?
I didn't. That looked like it does.
Hundred, and then over 100,000 more?
I think you bought a demo unit, a spec unit.
Okay.
And that company didn't even get out this week.
And the market says, shows in terms of cost of product and materials and things like that at last, well, projections going forward, I mean, I'm not.
I'm not all that surprised, Joe.
I mean, I would, I guess I would go with the ask Jeff to assess the conditions and stipulations to bid, make sure it conforms with the specification. I'd use the, give a quick report on this, you know?
That's a motion? A second?
A second.
Yeah, motion been made, seconded to turn this over to Jeff for review based on the specs provided. You report back in two weeks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carried. I need to back up and I forgot again to let everybody know that this is, this council meeting has been broadcast on Microsoft Teams. And for anybody who's online, it's being recorded and anybody online cares to speak or in the room, please stand, state your names. And we'll go forward with the meeting. Sorry about that. Next, next bid, ACPI.
ACPI actually has two tax abatements. One was from 2014, one is from 2017. The one that you, the tax abatement CF1 for personal property that you approved at the last meeting was for the 2017. I turned it over to the assessor. She emailed me back and said, hey, we're missing one for the 2014. They've, since last year, a new company's taken over. They have a new finance person, so it just got lost in the shuffle. So I provided a copy of the one for 2014 and if it's, your pleasure to go ahead and approve that they're in substantial compliance with the tax abatement and authorize the president of council to sign the CF1.
Okay, so everything's in order.
They had employees, didn't have assessed value. The employees max previous?
Yeah.
I'd make a motion if you approve the 2014 ACPI tax abatement statement and authorize.
A second? A second?
I'll say.
Motion made by Rich and seconded by Sally to approve the ACPI tax abatement. I need to sign it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Unsafe building update. Chuck?
Yes, sir. Um, we have info of projects that we're working on right now. One that's stolen for horses, Mr. Oswald. The property at the end of Jefferson belongs to, um, I did make contact with him earlier this week. We had a long conversation, told him that we needed to get that cleaned up and needed to have that. Like he was going to be able to do that or wanted to. On asset end form, they have had it for many years when the town put all the water into his business and flooded him out and all the things. We want his property. I assure them we don't want to own it. There it stands. At this point, I think I would like to, with our attorney, Mr. Clevinger, have him write the letter, giving him 15 days or 30 days to have that dated and then go directly.
Counsel's pleasure is a 30-day letter. Sound appropriate? Nothing happens on that 30-day period of time.
Any question? Question for Jim. This is probably going to come up in the county unsafe building. For you too. Are we competing against each other or what's your feeling?
Well, uh, this is outside the town limits, but in the, um, yeah. Well, the, the county is making adjustments so that, um, they're going to really sort of put the ball back inside the town limits with the town. And outside the town limits, the county is going to be doing its thing. So in answer to your question, yeah, if it comes up with the county unsafe building thing, because it's outside of the town limits, they, they may be wanting to deal with it. But that's all part of an ordinance that hasn't been, uh, adopted yet. So right now it's still the way it is, but it's going to change probably.
And could our argument be that we handled this particular situation in the past?
And I'm sure that if, you know, if we bring this up and you indicate that the town's wanting to deal with it, I, I'm sure that we'll, that we can get that job done.
Well, if that's the pleasure of the town, that's fine. I'll bring that up on Thursday.
Anyone else have any comment?
It's cost wise. Costs the same one we give candy, that's it.
Well, that's, that's why we're making the changes to some degree, just to get a little clarification on that. But if it, if it would be inside the town limits going forward after the adoption of the new ordinance, then it's going to be town's responsibility, you know, to, for everything. If it's outside, then it's going to be the county unsafe. So.
And it's the town limit, it's not the two mile.
It's not going to be the two mile.
Are the rules or standards the same between the county and the?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, just as a follow-up to that, if the county does adopt this revision that we're talking about, then I think Culver is going to have to go back and go back to the way it was before. And before we modified it.
Not for properties we're already.
Pardon me?
Not for properties we're already.
Well, but we're going to, we're going to, yes, we'll have to adopt it, you know, going forward. When, when Chuck basically was the building commissioner in both places for ease purposes, he sort of consolidated everything into one. Okay, well, now that's not the situation. So, and for a number of other reasons, the county is going to stick with the unincorporated areas. And they're going to have all the towns, cities stay with the incorporated areas.
Bill, I have one other comment. I think that letting Jim handle this is the right way to do it. Um, it'll take longer to get it through the county than what it would a letter from you right now. So I think, you know, that's the way to go and I'll bring it up on Thursday. Culver wants to, you know, turn the sword for the town.
Good. So you want to make a motion, then we go ahead and, did you make a? Thirty, thirty.
That's what I thought.
He said fifteen or thirty, but I said, I thought thirty.
All right. Yeah, I would make a motion that we authorize, um, legislative country, we got the budget to, concerning the property.
A second to that?
I second.
Motion made by Rich, seconded by Bill Ham to instruct the town attorney to write Mr. Bush a letter, given him 30 days to clean up the burned up, burned out property out on West Jefferson. Um, after that, you know, we'll take it to court. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carried.
The one I have on the screen up there behind you, uh, this is broken, foundation. You can see that cave in and falling in. This is a leftover mess. We gave, uh, owner notice to tear the building down. He left this, told us that he wanted to rebuild on it. And it wasn't anything we could push at that point now that it's crumbled and fallen in and total disrepair and can't be built on. I'd like to suggest that we have our attorney send him a letter, 15 days to clean it up. He's been dancing around this for about a year and a half. Just get it done and if he doesn't go in.
He's just one of the, there's a building from the issue of damage, so.
Yes, he had a demolition permit. Then when he had that down, when I approached him about tearing out the foundation, said that has to come out. That's when he got a building. And then it's expired. As long as that was in effect, we couldn't do anything. Now it's expired.
You wanted a 15-day letter and then we go in and clean it out?
There's also a lot of debris on the property and it's, some of the surrounding neighbors on Main Street have complained that they're getting rats on their properties.
Oh, yeah.
So if we could add the cleanup of that and the general property, because it's beyond just the foundation. Yes, South Ohio.
Is there a motion to that effect?
No motion.
Second? Is there a second? Motion made by Bill Clevinger, seconded by Sally to write Mr. Cooper a 15-day letter to clean up the property. To lose the, uh,
Foundation.
Move the foundation.
Fill in the hole.
Fill in the hole and clean up the surrounding property. Otherwise, we'll go back to court. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carried.
We have some others that are in the works, but, um, trying to get these taken care of right now. I've spoken with some of you individually and others as a group. Can we have a plan on where we're going next? Unsafe. Might have one.
I just want to make a statement here. I have talked to Chuck about these and Chuck suggested that with the BZA and Plan Commission meeting, like the third week of the month, Chuck will come in on the second council meeting of every month and give us report on what went on at BZA and Plan Commission and update us on the unsafe building. And so he's on a schedule and a program to report back to the council. And that way we'll, you know, now where we're going to be going each and every month.
We already said on our list, well, I know from the, um, Jim spoke to the owner, the last owners and then.
Yeah, it's supposed to be, it's going to be at the end of this week or next week sometime. We'll have pictures on that, inside out this.
Chuck, I have a question. Is property behind that where the trucks are and everything, yes, is he in compliance on that with all those vehicles?
With the vehicles? No, that's, that's part of what I think you were talking about.
Looking after getting. And you too. Okay, the vehicles would be pulling them out. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there's just so much on the property, both properties really. There's 432 South and 438. And that one in particular has spread toward.
Main Street.
Yeah, the opposite direction of the front of the property, toward the back of the property, east. Yeah. It just needs to be picked up. It's definitely a nuisance per the nuisance order. There was a grass letter sent. We're still within the time window of him having time to clean it up.
And there never was a security fence put around that open hole, you know, creating a few lots of trucks. That's to the security. Okay. Anything else, Chuck? That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Regional cellar plan update.
Um, I actually don't have any updates. It's the last regional stellar plan update on the park project. Uh, most of our regional stellar projects are not quite in the works yet. We're implementing later in that process. For the stellar plan update, I do have an update on the Lake Max Trail Phase Two. The design is in from Troyer Group, the eight-foot design that we all talked about. Uh, I am meeting one, one of the residents wants to see it, uh, that will come by tomorrow to the office up here. It's really large. I don't know if I can get it emailed to you, but if you want to see it, pop on in. I can show it to you. I don't have a printout from Troyer because Mike hasn't been down here, but I've got the electronic file for it. Um, I could also put it on like SharePoint, try to share a link to you to see if you want, if you want to try it that way. Um, but it looks good. They did some work on the drainage issues in addition to the design change. So next, that's going to go to NDOT out for a construction bid and Bob and I need to produce some paperwork related to that um, that their project manager just notified us of yesterday. So we're trying to figure out what that is based on what Jonathan had already completed for that project. So I will be busy on that tomorrow. Um, Bob and I are going through literally dozens of files to figure out what we need there. So really that's all I have for the stellar plan update. Uh, as you guys could see, construction's still going on on the State Road 10 project, on the Jefferson Street project. We haven't fielded a lot of calls on those, believe it or not. So they appear to be going rather smoothly. And then Karen and I are going to get together soon on the commercial sign that we put out by the school. Karen's been learning how to work with software and we're going to figure out a policy for that and present that to council and maybe suggest to you what we think that policy might be. So if you have any thoughts or ideas on that, um, drop in and let us know. We'll, we'll get together on it and let you guys vote on a policy of some sort for that. And that's really all I have for regional cellar plan update and cellar plan update.
Town manager report.
All right, slip right into that one. I'm not covering the lengthy chapter book I sent you. I'll just get the highlights. I already did Lake Max Trail too. That was one of my highlights. Under town manager's report, one of the things you didn't see there, um, in the last 24, 48 hours, MACOG, which is Michiana Area Council of Governments, if you haven't heard of them, Bill.
Nope.
Um, they are a transportation planning, uh, group that represents 60-some communities in our region and Marshall County is part of their region. And whenever we apply for grants, uh, we always reach out to MACOG to be a guiding leader for doing that. Um, so when we did Stellar, they were one of our partners on Stellar and they partnered with us on numerous grants. Often too, if they see a grant they think we would qualify for or we should jump on, they contact us. And that's been the case for a grant that's called Preserving Main Street Grant. Um, it's, MACOG reached out to our Main Street organization, which is called Develop Culver, which happens to sit on that board. Tracy Fox is the president of Develop Culver's board. And MACOG said that there's this preserving, uh, Main Street grant out there that they believe of all the communities they're working with, we may qualify well for this as a project. Um, so, uh, several people have met about this. It's a $2 million grant that would go toward preserving, um, a historic property on Main Street. And we're sort of thinking maybe that would be the bank, First Farmers Bank, um, which we've looked at in the past, um, with our redevelopment commission and some council members were involved in that. And we actually had some cost estimates done in 2018-ish, I think. Um, and some architect work done where someone came and looked at the building and walked through it and did a bit of a study on it. So the thought is that that might be the ideal project because one, we've done some work on it. It qualifies because it's in our downtown Main Street area. It happens to be that it's sitting in a historic district. And one of the requirements of this grant is that wherever you do the project, if you get the grant, it will have to be designated historic. Um, and we're already designated that on that block. So, um, as part of doing that grant, um, it requires, so whenever you do an OKRA grant, because this is OKRA money and that's Office of Community Rural Affairs, you have to have a local unit of government sponsor it. So we as the council would need to say, we support organization applying for this and we support MACOG helping us to apply for it because they have some expertise in doing this sort of thing. Uh, and thus Bill asked me to bring this to the town council and get your input. And a couple of you have already been involved in some meetings. Um, we would need to raise some match dollars for the grant that aren't for construction, therefore sustaining your Main Street organization. And also to endow sustaining Main Street historic preservation projects. So it's kind of unusual that they're not requiring this massive match for construction, which normally with OKRA would be 20%. The match in this case would be 10%. We don't have to raise that tonight. Um, we would have some time to raise it if indeed we were awarded the grant. So they give you a certain amount of time to make that match. We would have some time to raise it if indeed we were awarded the grant. So they give you a certain amount of time to make that match. That, those match dollars can really come from anywhere. It could come from us, redevelopment, nonprofit, private investment, et cetera.
And I think there's an 18-month delay.
Yes.
By these funds.
And if we were to apply, the deadline is fairly quickly. This is a pilot program for OKRA, so it's a little different than their normal grant program. The application is due June 18th. One reason MACOG's willing to help, this grant only came out this month, so it's not like MACOG has known about this for six months. It's a new pilot program, which tells me they are looking for a community that might already have something in the works or some of these requirements already met, which may be why MACOG said you would have a good shot at it. And so if we go for it, we would get the application in. We've already talked to some partner organizations that they require you partner with in terms of support. So they want a community foundation to support you. They want economic development to support you. They want some businesses to support you. Culver Academies has said they would be more than happy to support us. They own businesses on Main Street. We've already heard from the community foundationists that they would support us, and MCEDC has said so. So I think we've already done some of the footwork to see if there are partners out there that support the project, and we have that. So my recommendation would be to have the council give their blessing for the Main Street organization to apply. And we would obviously be involved in part of that process and implementing the grant if we should get it.
I just have a question. What is the intended use of the funds?
What they're really intending is Main Street organizations through the OKRA office, they believe in preserving historic iconic buildings, cultural aspects of those. This particular grant is also to say, okay, we want to elevate your Main Street to the next level. And so that match dollars goes toward doing that. For example, the $100,000 that gets endowed would support other future projects on Main Street. So if we wanted to preserve one of the business buildings, the, the next block over, the retail merchant buildings, you could take funds out of this endowed money. The other $100,000 can be used for your Main Street organization to pay their director, to pay for other Main Street projects. It's their way of trying to sustain Main Street organizations, which are purely volunteer organizations across the state. And if you reach the paid level or you start raising funds for these organizations, you kind of get a bump up and a leg up on grants. But it, the idea is to promote economic development through sustaining and preserving historic properties.
Thank you.
Question. Mentioned the bank building, being a historic area and so forth, but who really, how much input and say does the town have in this? Or is it totally overseen by the, what is it, Develop Culver?
Part of what would happen, Bill, as a result of this project is we would have to, there are certain activities we would have to do. We'd have to have a historic preservation commission that would get developed out of this. There's other activities related to it, like the Indiana Department of Humanities is part of it.
But not my question.
But we, we would have some oversight in terms of OKRA will not do a grant with the recipient, like a nonprofit or a Main Street group, unless they have a, a local government. So Main Street can't just apply for it without the blessing of the local municipality. Generally, what will happen if you have a local group, a nonprofit, or a Main Street group apply for one of these grants, they pretty much run the grant, but they keep a liaison with your local government unit. Because we would have to, so for example, what's happening in Marshall County with these COVID grants, the county is acting as that government agency. The money goes to the government agency, but then it goes to the sub-recipient. So, and they have, the, when MCEDC applied for a COVID OKRA grant, money goes to the county, it gets transferred to MCEDC. They get it out to the small businesses that got aided through that grant. In this case, we'd get the money, likely this is how it would work, we would get the money, we would be a pass-through to that Main Street organization. MACOG is involved as well, as sort of some oversight, too, and there's reporting you have to do, just like any other grant. And we would be audited, just like all our other OKRA grants.
From a planning perspective, I mean, Sally and Bill were both, I mean, they're snuck in on, on some of the plans and the grant initiatives that I think the planning process on this also.
Well, yeah, my, my only question is, I mean, if it's a final say and everything else, the Develop Culver group, or does the town go to have?
It'll be a, it'd be a collaboration of several people with the town council having representation. And I would even think MACOG would help guide some of those conversations. Technically, the money's moving through us to that sub-recipient.
Any other questions? Comments?
I, I will recuse myself from vote on this since I'm on a board.
Explain it a little bit more to you in detail. Too much to say right now at meetings, but things will be done as well. Everything's up and running here. A few months, I'll be giving you a report with the new software. We're looking at three months then with the new software. So I'm excited with reports I've been running right now. But I wanted to wait till I had three months into it to make sure the data is kind of following the way it was. Here, so we'll get a lot more detailed reports as and to what's going on. Call line is starting to pick up here from previous months here. Shipping has been lifted here. We're starting to see more use of these events out there. We got some big events happening over the next couple of weeks here. We're all ready for them all and look forward to a happy statement on summer for everybody.
Thank you, Jeff. All right.
All right. Just a few, just to let you guys know that we're, there's a lot of trainings coming over. Guys, we have three new open water divers that passed their course. Four people south Bend last weekend that took classes, the weekend class and all that really well. We have three of our newest fire department guys finally who found a class that they can get into with the fire one two class. That it's mandatory that they take, where they can go on the truck to fight fires. They're struggling with that, with the county not putting one together. So the guys, the guys on months, they can't, they can't excel. They can't go on without these classes. So we're sending them here to the operation. That's the closest and fastest class we can do there. Also, I want to thank Bourbon Street Pizza, they threw up the pizza party last night. The guys loved it, it was good. Thank them very much for that.
That's it. That's good. Please, I know Wayne's got a live meeting tonight, so I'm sure he's not on. Park? Amber on or no, no park report? Utilities, Bob?
Uh, we didn't have anything this week for Bob. Yeah, no, no purchase orders or anything.
Orders and commissions, plan commission.
Plan commission that last Tuesday. Our main focus was to hear the presentation from H Q on annexing the property at the end of May, Tamrac. The commission did vote to approve the annex on the condition that they get approval from the B Z A on what they want to do there. So once, if that happens, then the plan commission will bring it to the council with a positive presentation on annex that when they will have the final decisions. That's the major thing that we did this month on the plan commission. We're looking at updating and tweaking some of our ordinances to kind of move the language where it either was or where it needs to be. So that's just ongoing. The border zoning appeals, we had six cases of this month. We didn't get out of here until 10:30 last Thursday. I would say that, just to tell you one more time, that your B Z A is one of the best in the whole more than Indiana. They do a very good job of listening, understanding, digesting, asking the questions and making good solid decisions. They, they're just not a rubber stamp. They don't come in and prove everything. In fact, we had more no's than we had yeses. Good job. One of the things that was before then was the plan at, on the property that four and a half acres I was talking about. They want to put a storage unit area there for motorhomes, boats, et cetera, et cetera. They also want to put bathrooms in there and put a locked area in there. They didn't have enough answers for the B Z As telling that they need to come back with all answers. Because we don't want B A motorhome hotels. So we're at, what we're working on.
It's good.
Addison, do you know? This guy wants the house back on the county, in the township rather than the city line.
We agreed that the affidavit, yeah, I think you can bring that up, the affidavit that you would look at and recommend it, that we're going to have them sign so that we have a property that's, half of it is in the township. Half is, half is in the town. So we're having them sign an affidavit that will stay with the property forever and saying that it would be sewn as if it was in town.
There's a balance here.
But you're going to make sure that gets recorded.
Right, yes. Right. So it'll be recorded, right?
They made the setback not quite what the homeowner wanted. They gave them a little bit, but not, they gave them the same setback you'd have on the township line, which was better than the town, but not the full amount of setback they wanted.
That's a good decision.
Thank you. Really well.
Actually, there hasn't been any since the last.
Free commission, anyone here for free commission? Report.
I just have three points for your approvals. One is for Motorola Solutions for $5,930 and 90%. And the other one is for V S radios. The second is for Blue River Technologies for $2,009 because of bad sewer, the bags for the sewer plants. And then seller services, $3,537 and 25 cents in that for the park to pay for the Christmas lights.
Motion to approve the claims over 2,000. Some of those were made by Sally as a second. Playing by Ritz, hold your favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both sometimes, much encouraged. Turn it forward.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I didn't really have too much. I sent you all an email on the seven on nine episode, we talked about that. Sheriff's sale is still scheduled on 4/15 Lakeshore for June 22nd, same day, 614 College Avenue. We don't have input on that one, but just so you know, interest wise. And we're working on Lake Mack Trails with C M A, but we're waiting back, to your back. And that says, was reported, so that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Anyone here for utility shut off, ordinance violation? And our season none will move on to citizen input. Yes, ma'am. Stand up and say your name, please.
I'm Julie Norwich, and I had some questions regarding the bike trail that was going to be going behind across ten and behind the C M A boat place and then across the road and then.
Like Max's face three?
Right, and then, and then it would go right behind my house. And we're right really close to, I mean, like from here to the flag when I'm sitting where it would be. And I just was kind of curious where exactly they were going to be tearing down bushes. I mean, if.
They haven't done the design yet. So they're in the middle, they've done the survey work, but they still have to do environmental work. It's probably going to be three, four months before we get a design, at which time we will have a public input session and let you take a look at it. And we'll, we'll put out word for that. I've got your email address now, so I can always email you an invitation to that.
The last minute thing, I wasn't going to come, but yeah.
Yeah, that's okay. I'm glad you did. So I know who you are now.
My concern is, is that I've lived there 30 years, side it being both sides. But we, making that curve, that's heading like if you're going from the west to the east, making that curve right before you get to the athletic field of the academy, that place is the crossway for all kinds of deer. And Chris, that's probably where the bike trail is going to be. And I know they're always having, it's like a blind spot, having to go around. And I'm just concerned that I wanted to, before we stop over there by the local clinic, they never stop. They don't stop and stop saying, and I just am kind of worried at now I have to, not only deer, but bikes. And then it's going to supposed to come out, it's supposed to end right next to my house. I don't know if it will down the road or.
It's kind of depends on how far we get with the construction budget. It's not at all designed. It's even possible that it.
Stop right, right at 10. You know, I mean, it's, I just can't see.
Yeah. Well, we'll eventually walk your property. I mean, I can come out and walk with you because that kind of input will be valuable to the designers. So we can arrange to meet if you want, because I can give that feedback to them as they're looking at the design. You know, they'll want to know things like that.
A stop or something that would make the bikes stop because I'm just, we can't always do it with the deer. So when you make that curve, it's people, you know, it scares me, you know? So I appreciate you, you know, offering your input and.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
We appreciate you coming and speaking up.
Early in the process.
Yeah, early in the process. I might say that's the first.
What, if this was phase two or?
This is phase three.
Phase three, so I wasn't quite sure, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other citizen input? He says, oh, very good, thank you. Council issues.
Just last week, A E sponsored a webinar on, I think it was Wednesday. But it was to address the recent rules issued by the R E Treasury concerning the A R P A grants in dollars. I don't know if anybody else participated in it. There was a lot of interesting information on the dollars that will be passed down and how they can be used. I think the initial termination of we've been titles of like.
Four thousand, three hundred and forty?
Four thousand, that may be readjusted, but they don't think with the, the N E U, the non, the non entitled units of government, which are the ones under $50,000, there would be much adjustment to that initial dollars. But there are some interesting things the dollars can be used for. From health care issues that include mental health, includes prescriptive things to the COVID, to consent, vexations, to public infrastructure, for water, for sewer, for broadband. It can help address issues of lost revenue. And so anyway, there are a lot of things that the dollars can be used for. We established or we do establish an account to manage those. And I, I think at some point in the not too distant future, we should probably have a work session to talk about this. I will, I will distribute the link. The webinar is available, not only with the pass out materials, but they actually videoed it and watched the whole thing. They got it in an unknown, it was probably 25 minutes. And I thought it was very informative, so I think we're sticking a look at it in your spare time.
Very straightforward and well done. Karen, Karen watched it and had me come in for part of it. That was, so.
So I will, I will distribute the link.
Lawrence is good, too.
We're sticking a look at, then maybe at our next meeting. And I, I timeline on, on the ideas on this.
And just a reminder, I mean, we have until the end of 2024 to spend money, too. So it's, it's not like we have to, you know, deter, I, I realize we need to start planning.
Right, because 50% of it is being in 2020.
We'll get 50% this year, 50% next year. And we have until the end of 2024 to spend.
To spend, but I think it needs to be submitted by 2024, spent by 2026 or.
No, you have to have a plan in place. And our ordinance stated that we would spend according to the plan. So yes, you have to have a plan, needs to be spent by the end of 2024. Yeah, this, the session we watched, they talked about, take your time. Like, don't, don't freak out and rush and, because you may see other grants come out that you might want to pair with it or.
And that's the other interesting thing that keep in mind on this, you can use these dollars to match other grants, not federal grants, state grants, some of the dollars, because I have, it can be used for batching. So if there are other grants, Jenny said that come along on COVID, they're sponsored by the state or things like that. Some of these dollars can be used as a matching, a local match.
Hmm.
So anyway, yeah, they're amazingly non-prescriptive.
Not restrictive?
Non-restrictive or non-prescriptive, I mean, they're pretty broad. Things you can't do are pretty straightforward and stated right up front.
The school is getting money as well, and I heard that they've got a plan to expand broadband. Are you guys familiar with that? Yeah. Well, yeah, and I don't know where you guys stand with broadband, but you ought to check with the school. I mean, you, I don't know whether you want to do something, not do something, they're doing it. But at least you ought to know what they're doing with their money. Air exchange, air exchanging, yeah.
Anything else?
That's it.
Bill?
Along the issue of broadband, it was brought up and discussed in the C R C. And Karen Schuman elaborated a little about what the school was thinking about. Possibly what they're doing, but I'm kind of intrigued by the possibility of, what possibility that Rochester Telephone could do for us. And I would like to suggest that maybe sometime in the future, we have Dave, I can't remember his last name, but he's been very active, Dave, and. Yeah, and get someone from Rochester Telephone, come up and give some kind of a presentation or update to the council.
You want to do that at like a regular meeting or work session or?
When Tom was in the group that looked at broadband. Also taking a look at some of the other companies that.
Right.
That exist absolutely currently, that they really want in the forefront.
Rich, wasn't one of the problems that when we got down to this, it was going to cost like a million dollars?
That was.
They're coming in for free, that's great.
Yeah, I mean, because they're, or because they're combined with.
R A M.
R A M.
So which is up on these chores and there you can tune the systems, they're there. To bring it from there into town, fiber processes, they would cost maybe three million and they were looking for a million contribution from the town to do. And then as we discovered, MediaCom has broadband cable in town of any, you know, infrastructure. I mean, there are problems with their services, but that may be a cheaper route. Anyway, I'm not saying we shouldn't look at it, because broadband is important, particularly as we move forward in the business respect.
Bill and Sally, they're, they're, they were saying at the C R C meeting also, wasn't there a company coming out of Mesawaka and South Bend area? What's this about there? Surf band? Surf band?
Something like surf band or something like that.
Startups all over the place.
Right.
I can look into that one, too, just to figure out what that's about, how far south they're coming.
I think it's not fast. The cable that some of the places from top end are bringing down, we're stopping, we're well north of us. Thousand dollars or something like that.
It's very, yeah, to bring it in. You keep hearing you're having trouble with MediaCom. And I, I guess I, I don't know, I need to talk to you about it or what? I've had their service for, since beginning of time. And last week it went out, I guess for a few hours, but it was a service fix. In other words, they had a line somewhere that they had a.
It's terrible at my house.
Right. I'm the same way. Yeah. But Dave Harley, he can't, I mean, he streams a lot and he says, that's, that's where the problem is.
Depends on how much you're doing that.
Yeah.
I stream all kinds of movies and stuff and I sometimes have four grandchildren all running on their phones and everything. There's no problem. I don't know where it's coming.
They brought their service into San Antonio, we're installing it, air service again, eighty units with a minimum of 100.
Right.
In each unit. It's guaranteed, so. They brought their service into San Antonio, we're installing it, air service again, eighty units with a minimum of 100.
Right.
In each unit. It's guaranteed, so. I think it's an important service that I can, I can, you have, I don't necessarily more complaints about MediaCom than we have time to share.
Well, you don't need to set up a work session right now for this, I don't think.
Well, we have a context if we need to break somebody into.
Right.
We can throw stones at it.
Sally, do you have anything?
Uh, no. Between these two meetings, but.
I just have one thing about the lake safety. I have a position where I have a bird's eye view, big part of the lake. And people running wide open after dark, just after dusk. People running with their dock lights only on, no running lights, way after dark. And the issue is that the sheriff patrols the lake, but almost never after dark, except for the major holidays. And I know that we don't have jurisdiction for the lake, probably, right? No, but you should talk to him and. I did. And, oh. I called him up right on the spot. Okay, what'd they say? Uh, they said they'd pass it on and then, you know, I told him who I was. Because the lake patrol has an agreement, N M O U. Yeah, I know. And, and I called them and it, it, I think it just goes down on a piece of paper and it's going out.
It's going to be sheriff's homework for that because there are a ton of people.
Yeah, they don't know what port to port means when you're coming at them. And they just cut right across you. And I told this guy, and he insisted on going inside me, inside Louise, because he was going to be closer to the shore than I was. He didn't even know what port was, he thought it was a wine or something.
I know several years back, D N R provided some, some classes. And I think that that may have been sponsored through the Mexican cookie lakes. That might be, I don't know, you know, calling D N R.
Because they have. There is an online certification.
Yeah.
For, that you have to have if you're under 16.
Yeah.
It's just because you're over 16 doesn't mean.
Know what you're doing, yeah. This is an accident ready to happen. Did you call it D N R? No, I didn't. Try them too. And something bad is going to happen soon.
At the end of the year last year, they issued the report and they issued, I forget how many warnings. I think they only had one or two citations for all of them. Okay, I think the word needs to be passed down from the community, that's not acceptable. You know, we don't want to be beating the people, you know, we don't want, you know, uses of power.
It's a conflict of interest. They get paid by the people they're patrolling.
I don't know about that, Bill. The ones we're patrolling are all these weekend, as I call them.
They still get paid by the homeowners association and the bulk of them are lakefront property owners.
I understand that, but the ones we're having trouble with, the people who don't know what the rules are, the homeowners know what the rules are. We find a homeowner that's not doing what they're supposed to, then shame on them, they have to be kicked out of the organization. But the fact is that the trouble, in my experience, my years on the lake, was always people that were there for the weekend.
They still own homes. They're not permanent residents, very few are, only 5%.
Maybe there's something that we can do tied to the.
Yeah.
I don't know what, I don't know what applies to suggest, but.
Remind people of the rules.
More than two, if you had more than two violations last year, you're not eligible for votes. Or, I don't know, I mean, that's just hypothetical.
Right.
How do you track that?
That would be just impossible.
The violations are written by the, the March Island Sheriff's Department. I mean, they appear actually on your drive, they, I think they appear on your drive.
It would only punish those within our pure slip area, not all the other non pure slip people, right?
Yeah, I don't know.
I'm just pointing out there's a safety issue, we don't need to.
Yeah, we could at least put a reminder of the rules with our boat contracts. You know, like, hey, here's safety rules on the lake, if you don't know them. And maybe even require they sign that before they get their slip or something, like they've read it.
Marty?
I have a comment that I'd like to add to the discussion of my experience, very similar with bills. Come out there on the water off at sunset. And at dusk, you're supposed to be running without a wake with all the lights. And it doesn't happen with a lot of frequency, but the lake patrol is still out the walk. So they come out, do a final run right as the sun's setting generally.
Okay.
But that, but you'll see boats with large, running full out. It do not get pulled out of the gears. Well, not, well, yeah, sometimes, yeah, sometimes they're actually pulled out of gears. I had an incident last summer with a, with boaters who came and docked at the pier. And decided it was just convenient to walk to Lake House Grill from the pier there. They came back and degreed it. We had called the lake patrol for a, for a strange boat docked and and they made it after the drunk people came falling out of the lake house, got the boat, which had an expired registration. And got on the boat, went out to the lake. Now the lake patrol did finally show up and not too much later, and I said, they just left, gave them a description of the boat and people. And the advice I got was maybe I needed to put a sign on the pier that said, it's a private. And that happened to me a few years ago, but their boy somehow came loose.
You have that undocumented problem.
Yeah, you know, well, it should, it should, that's what's right. So, so I couldn't agree more that we need to create a higher awareness of schools, but I do think there's a lack.
It's like something you need to take up with the lake association. Oh, I mean, it's not really, I know you guys are all interested, but that's nothing you.
Bring them in next one. There you go. Anybody else have anything?
No, I just want to thank everyone for being so supportive this past week. Grant and I really appreciate it.
Nothing else?
First, say aye.
Aye.
Over one, under was the loser.
We didn't get in the hole.
They didn't get into the slip, they might have been fucking, I would close.